Okay.
I have six PM, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six PM. My name is Mayor Julia Johnson, and this is the Seidra Willie City Council. Will you all stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
One nation.
Indivisible, liberty.
And justice for.
Thank you, everyone. We'll go through roll call. I see everybody's here, but we'll just go through roll call for the record. So Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilwoman Joelle and Kesty.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Nick Lavaca.
Present.
Councilman Joe Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Looking at approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
I'm here. I'll make that motion.
Move to go forward with the agenda.
Okay. And Councilwoman Kesty, can I put you in as a second there? All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Kesty. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And oppose, same sign. All right. Consent agenda, items one through seven, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you.
I will second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So for the consent agenda, items one through seven, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. I see here tonight that we have a special guest and presentation by Barbara Nittis. Is Barbara on? Yes, she is. Hello, Barbara. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you. And Barbara's gonna be talking about the SBA disaster assistance. So I'll let you take it over, Barbara.
Thank you. So we are here specifically for the disaster that happened on November fifth through December second. So that incident that was flooding, mudslides, landslides, also winds, that is all included in that incident. So after that, you can, you're able to, this is how the process works. Either you register for FEMA and you get referred to us. I'm, you know, I'm just a public informations officer. So I just represent as just spreading the information to you guys. Our deadline for the physical disaster loans is March seventh, so it's coming close. We offer low-interest government loans for businesses of all sizes, homeowners and renters, as well as nonprofit organizations, including places of worship. So for homeowners, and we offer up to $200,000 and as low as 1.43% interest rate. Forty, and that's, this is to repair a place that did physical damage. As far as for, there's $44,000 for personal property as well. And for renters, they also get for personal property as well. So anything that's included in the home. So this does not include second homes or second cars, just primary residence, as well as primary car. As far as the businesses aspect, we offer up to $2 million, interest rate as low as 2.83%. And also, that's also to repair a place, the property. And also, we offer the economic injury disaster loan, which is any, you know, after, after that, there's working capital loan. So if you were, you know, you've received, you were closed during that incident, and you need, you know, assistance for economic losses, you can have that ability to regain your business. So that, that has a different deadline. That's October fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. So you do have time, but we do suggest it takes a little bit of time to, to at least for that process to work out. As far as the nonprofits, it's also up to $2 million, also to repair a place. And it's as low as 1.87%. That's also, but this, this, for nonprofits is a different deadline. It's March twenty-eighth for physical damage. And for economic injuries, October twenty-seventh. So for, we also, there's three ways to apply. There is the disaster recovery centers, which is in Central Willie, the old library, and it's eight oh two Ball Street. And last day is tomorrow is nine to six. For, no, it's, yeah, it's ten to six, sorry. But it's gonna be turned to a D-LOCK, which is a disaster loan outreach center. You're still able to close documents, but also you're still able to apply there from our side. So it'll turn to SBA. But there's other two disaster recovery centers, which is, no, it's one more. Hamilton Fire Department is nine fifty-one Pettit Street. And that's nine, it's gonna be ten to six PM Thursday through Saturday. And our third way is to apply is a customer service number is one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. I also want to make clear that we do cover deductibles. There's no closing cost when you do this process, and you're not obligated to take the loan after. So if you do not want it, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to take the loan. So it's a major, you know, just see what your options are. Because as you do, if we do get rejected from us, you do get referred back to FEMA. So we do suggest to see all the options available for, you know, if you do had suffered and just, you don't wanna miss that deadline. Because otherwise, you know, otherwise, you're not able to get that assistance. So that's why I wanted to get that point across for everyone. Also, one more thing, just want to mention. If you do have an area that you feel that is in the flood zone, you're able to relocate. We do offer that ability for all residences. And also, we have the, is the mitigation, that's mitigation improvements. So it's just a case-by-case basis. You'll get like 20% of the total amount of the physical damage of real estate property. So this is basically a roundabout of what I've, we offer from the Small Business Administration. Is there any, if you have any questions, I will also send this information by email to everyone. At least we can spread the word out, so everybody doesn't lose their chance to get this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
We also put it on Facebook.
Good.
So are there any questions for Barbara?
Okay.
Just so I understand, so is FEMA, that's their, their last day is tomorrow?
Their last day for the one, the Sandro, old Sandro Willie Library, that's the last day for tomorrow. It's gonna turn to a D-LOCK, which is a disaster outreach loan outreach center, which, so it's for closing documents as for us, but you're able to apply. But you can still register for FEMA on a line. But you can also go to the Hamilton. There's also a disaster recovery center in Hamilton.
Okay.
So people can apply that. The hours for the Hamilton? Or for the outreach?
For the outreach in Seidra Willie?
Yes, Central Willie is, so it's nine to six, and Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Tuesday, eleven to eight PM.
Okay. All right. Again, I'll put it out there. Are there any questions for Barbara? Any comments? Well, Barbara, thank you very much for coming on and making us aware. Yes, we really want our citizens to be able to have access to this. And we were pleased that you decided to choose the, the old library there on Ball Street.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for helping us out and getting the word out, because it's important to everybody to at least know what's going on and have that ability to have that chance to make everything work out for everybody. I also want to mention one last thing. The disaster recovery centers, you're able to also check status of your application, just in case you do get rejected. You can see what your options are and also on that aspect. So that's it. All you need is your application number. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm moving on to staff reports. Before I do, I did hear a comment about going back in person. We're gonna do that on the twenty-third. So I don't know if you noticed on your agenda, but at the very end, it says the next meeting is February fifteenth. That's, that's incorrect. That's just a typo. It'll actually be February twenty-third at six PM in person. It'll be hybrid for those who are still not comfortable coming back together. But just to let you know that that's what we're gonna be doing in a couple of weeks from now. Very glad to see this happening. And also, I want to thank everybody for being in touch so quickly regarding the council working retreat. We have settled on Friday, April twenty-ninth. So that information will be going out to you, but that's Friday, April twenty-ninth. And there'll be more information regarding that. Okay, other than that, we will move on, and I will begin with Fire Chief Frank Wagner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This evening, some good news. We do have our four new recruits that we got from our testing process a few weeks ago. They've been in this week getting some paperwork done with Chief Gardner and getting their medicals and stuff taken care of. So we'll start down that process. So that is some good news. And special thanks to Mark and his team of Nathan Salsina and Kevin Kesty and Brent Scheifelbein. They've done an amazing job once again at, we're calling it two point seven five, our storage building up at Station Two at the fire house up there on North Township. Stop in and take a look. Phenomenal job as usual, as well as getting all of our quotes and stuff together for fixing up our training site of all the fencing and gravel work and stuff that was damaged during the floods. And then some more good news with the COVID numbers continuing to decline. Hospitalizations are still way up in the county. So our facilities are still hard to get our patients in and out of and causing some turnaround issues for the ambulance crews. But we're hoping, since they're saying our plateau, we're looking at happened the second or third week in January, we'll continue that decline and get back to hopefully some normalcy going into the spring. And thank you. Any questions?
No questions for Chief? Okay, thank you, Chief. And it looks like it is Lieutenant Dan McElroy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. First of all, I guess I wanna let you know that Jed Case is back in town and Officer Department deployed for last year. He'll be back with the department after his military orders and March first. So he'll be back with us. His first day is March second. So glad to have him back. He's our defensive tactics instructor. So look to, look forward to doing some training with him. Then another thing I'm working on is, is planning a sergeant's assessment center for future promotion, kinda early, just kinda planning ahead. Schedules is gonna be in April, but knowing that lots of people like to take vacations and stuff and such during the summertime. I wanna have that available to all of the candidates that meet the requirements there. And so I'm just kinda working through that, planning through that, getting assessors and such. And then I know Lynn's touched bases on the increase of motor vehicle thefts and such. You know, WASP kind of put out last Friday that there's statistics on the increased amount of motor vehicle thefts statewide is up 50% since the end of July, which is, which is crazy. And we're, we're kinda seeing that here, just what we're dealing with and what we're putting on Facebook and such. We're, we're finding stolen vehicles during the nighttime. And we have a lot of officers out there being proactive, trying to locate these vehicles either unoccupied. And just the, the issue that it seems like they know they can flee and not be chased. And so that's just kinda the aspect that we're dealing with. The session, legislation session is going on, and there's some insight that, you know, some things are, they're looking at things changing a little bit, hopefully for the better. But that's kinda where we stand. It's, it's, it's a moot point until that's finalized. But I do see some headway in that, in that area. That's all I have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Lieutenant?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question on that.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman Lavaca.
How you doing, Lieutenant Dan? I don't think we've met yet. So congratulations on your position that's upcoming for Chief. Yeah, so the car theft is a pretty serious thing. It's come up throughout all of the county, but it's really hidden everywhere. And we are seeing it here in Seidra Willie. My neighbors pick up with stolen. I saw two cars that were abandoned over by the work site. It's up in Hamilton, but still new Acura, new Audi. Is there anything that we can do about that? Or is that just, I mean, would Neighborhood Watch or Encourage Neighborhood Watch even help with that? Or is there anything?
I think that's always suggestion is, is always watch after your neighbors and keep an eye out and report crimes if you do see them. So yeah, that would definitely be helpful for insight on that. I think what we're running into is, you know, criminals being able to behave in this manner and us not be able to do anything about it. Yeah, there's some safety factors and liability factors in all this stuff. But more or less, if we get some clear guidance of what we can and can't do, would be helpful reinstating some of the laws we had in the past, but also adapting to that police reform.
Thank you very much. I am writing our reps up there in, you know, in Olympia, letting them know that something's gotta give. And I know a number of people that are as well, just really putting that voice down from a lot of people. You guys need to have a seat at the table. You know it works. And I just wanna tell you guys, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Lieutenant? I was curious for who you are catching. Are these like teenagers joyriding or people stripping the cars for parts? What seems to be the purpose of thefts?
You know, unknown. Some, some of these are what we, we believe are to and from to commit other property crimes. Cadillac thefts, multiple reasons committing other thefts of cars. You know, just, just kinda that organized theft ring. And when we're, when we're dealing with these cars, run a plate, they're switching the plates on them. So it's pretty good identification that this plate doesn't match. And when we are initiating a stop on that vehicle, then they flee. And a lot of times we're finding afterwards is that the vehicles ends up being stolen because it's dumped somewhere else after the fact that we can't follow through with the continued attempt to stop that vehicle. So that's kinda what, what we're dealing with. I think we're seeing a lot of property crimes surrounding the area of the stolen vehicles for committing burglaries. You know, if you have a car that's not associated to you, different plates, it's easier to conceal your identity. So I think that's the main factor there.
Okay, understood. Thank you and appreciate what you do. I know it's getting tougher.
Thank you. Like, like I said, I see some potential changes that could help us out.
Good.
All right, good. Thank you. Moving on to Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Mostly, we're focused on the transition to Microsoft three sixty-five, getting all the teams set up with the resources for collaboration. And we'll be rolling out the actual installs of the client applications for all of the staff in stages beginning next week. And speaking of next week, we're gonna be having our first Technology Committee meeting on the seventeenth, five thirty. That's a Thursday. Via Zoom. And I'm working on the agenda for that, and I'll get that posted on our website. So. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bill? All right, thank you, Bill. Moving on to Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The two repair projects down at Riverfront and the fire training site have been awarded. And I expect the gravel work is to start this week and the fence in a couple of weeks. So that's underway. Yeah, I don't know if any of you have been down by the wastewater facility, but the framing and the roof trusses are up for the first of the two buildings there. Today, they poured the slab for the maintenance building. So everything's moving along pretty quickly now down there and looking like real buildings and all of that. Looking to complete those projects in September of this year. We've had the pre-construction meeting for our intersection improvements out at Township and Highway twenty. The contractor's given us a tentative schedule to start that work. The last week of June should be completed by the end of August, if everything holds with that. Beyond that, we're working on design things, and I'm working on a consultant selection process for the other intersection project on Highway nine that we have tip funds for. So that's pretty much what's going on in the public works world right now.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mark. Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So one, one issue that you're familiar with is the bucko plat that you reviewed a developer agreement for, had its public hearing a couple of weeks ago, and the hearing examiner made his recommendations. So that recommendation is going to be brought to the city council for your action on it at the next city council meeting. Also, at next city council meeting, I'm going to be giving a presentation about a countywide planning policy that the county is working on and the SCADA Council of Governments has been reviewing. It's been gone through the SCOG Technical Advisory Group, and it's been in front of the SCOG Steering Committee, which is the legislative body leaders for all of the cities and the three commissioners for the county. So now, after they've, each of those bodies have looked at it, it's going to come to each of the jurisdictions for some, so, so the city council and the citizens of Seidra Willie have the opportunity to look at it. So this is a, the project itself is amendments to the countywide planning policies of the SCADA County. That's a SCADA County government document that speaks about boundary review boards. And we have a SCADA County Boundary Review Board, but our experience at the city level has been that the Boundary Review Board has been duplicative and actually causes problems for cities when we intend to annex property that is in our urban growth area. So I'll give you the full details of it at that time. But this is actually something that the cities requested to have done to eliminate, to put language in the countywide planning policies that would enable a county to then eliminate the Boundary Review Board, as I said, which is a duplicative process under growth management. It's sort of an archaic way of, of making sure that strange annexations don't happen. And it also affects some other like water districts and whatnot. But most of these things are now covered by other state laws. So we're going to make a recommendation that it go away. And so we're gonna bring it to the city council for you to understand it. And if you have any comments or concerns, you know, we can, we'll talk about it then. But wanted to give you a little heads up, so it didn't come out of nowhere. The Planning Commission, next week, will be working on, they'll be picking up the development standards for the Central Business District buildings. That's a project that we started last summer at the Planning Commission level and then had to put it aside as we worked on the comprehensive plan updates. So now that the Planning Commission's done with the comprehensive plan updates for two thousand and twenty-one, and those will be coming to the council here soon also. Now the Planning Commission is freed up to do another deep dive on the design review standard updates that the Planning Commission, that the city council requested the Planning Commission work on last year. So they're doing really good on it. We anticipate this would be one last really deep look at it before we have a document that's good enough to have a public hearing on at the following Planning Commission meeting, which would then, of course, be in March fifteenth. So we're hoping that in late April or June, we'll be able to have the revisions done and brought to the city council. And that's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Coleman? All right, thank you, John. Let's see. Our Director of Finance is on vacation, so I'm gonna step down to City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have anything of interest to the group this evening.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Nikki? Okay, hearing none. And our City Administrator, Charlie Bush. Good evening, Charlie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I also do not have anything tonight. I've got a couple items on the agenda down under unfinished business on pinching for Debbie Burton with the city clerk hat on tonight. So I'll also read something into the record here in a moment. So that'll be enough talking for me later in the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to council members, and I'll begin with Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Good evening. I don't have anything tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Joe Burns.
Well, as some of you may know, I'm the Vice President of the Seidra Willie Lions Club. And we had been collecting plastic, like plastic bags, so that we could do a program that would turn around 500 pounds of plastic for a bench that we could use in a public space. So they, on behalf of the Lions Club of Seidra Willie, I was asked to present the city of Seidra Willie with a certificate of appreciation for helping us collect those bags. We deeply appreciate your help, and we are working with the city to find a great location for the bench that we got. Thank you.
That's fantastic, Joe. Thank you. Please, please thank the Lions Club on behalf of the city.
I will.
All right, thank you. Anything else you'd like to share?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Nick Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I did get with Mark Freiberger and John Coleman on the Parts and Planning Commission. So we got that set up for March, which is awesome, as well as the other committees. And looking forward to a really good summer, really, it's a good year. So thank you guys very much, and thanks for all your help with that.
Thank you, Nick. Councilman Glenn Allen.
Yep, yes, Madam Mayor. Unlike everyone else, I'm just boring tonight and have nothing to say other than have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Councilwoman Joelle and Kesty.
Okay, let's hope this works. I'm sorry, guys, I had to turn my screen off so that I could speak. I want to give thanks to Jeff Moody for all his extra work at the cemetery, where there's been quite a bit of vandalism lately, from knocking over headstones to needles to people bringing their dogs. And as a public service reminder, dogs are not allowed on the cemetery property, big or small, because our loved ones buried at the cemetery would not appreciate their final resting place being used as a doggy restroom. And I'm hoping that we can see a bigger police presence with maybe some night patrols driving through the cemetery. I didn't know how that would work, but I'm throwing that out, out to the lieutenant just to see. I don't know. So that's what I got tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a whole lot. I just wanna, want to apologize to Nick. He, with his friendly hello, but I just didn't, I didn't hear you right away. I, you know, I'm an older gentleman, and I have these, these kickers in my ears, and I didn't have them turned up. So I'm sorry, and I apologize. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Chuck. And Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I have no report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council members. Moving on to public comment, it is six twenty-nine, and I will open this up for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to give public comment, please state your name and your address and try to keep your message to about three minutes. Is there anyone for public comment online? Yes, Joe Consular. Good evening, Joe.
Hi, I live on Warner Street and.
Hi, I I live on Warner Street and just want to take a moment and really think our first responders really do around here. Couple thoughts this evening. Number one is that I fully support middle housing throughout Cedar Woolley, complex duplexes, condos, that kind of thing. We is we get more transit in this community. We need they also have more housing. I know it's a big issue with a lot of cities upset over the state at a point where they have to man or about to mandate middle housing close to transit. I read that the city got ahead of that. Well, we're still small and so in some places for that close to the bus route so that we don't need a big overhanded mandate. You can just tell I prefer we do things voluntarily and with a nudge instead of a hammer. Because if you think every problem can be solved by a hammer, then everything's a nail. That I I also really am grateful that we we live in a town where we support our police. And I remember a city council meeting last year where some people at the city council meeting online said, don't Seattle Seadrow. I share that view. I don't understand why people are doing drugs at a cemetery, but that's a that was a big part of the slide of Seattle the past decade. And I really hope it's made clear in this community that we are not going to be accepting of drug culture. That if you do drugs, you need to seek treatment or go to jail. My mother was a recipient of a violent gun crime fueled in part by the drug trade a long time ago and just really hope that we have a just say no to drugs approach in Cedar Woolley. And those are my thoughts for this evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Joe, for sharing your thoughts. I believe, Mr. Bush, you have something you're going to read into the record we received.
Yeah, we received, thank you, Mayor. We received written correspondence from Sharon McDaniel. We didn't receive an address from her. She was hoping we would have this read at last week's meeting. However, I didn't get it until after last week's meeting, so we thought the next best thing would be to just read it to you this evening. She says, Dear council members, I am writing in my concern about the possible passage of Resolution ten eighty-eight twenty-two. It concerns me that the council is considering passing this resolution. As the citizen of Cedar Woolley, I think it would be to the detriment of the city's reputation to take such a stand. Measures to try and stop the spread of COVID nineteen should be applauded, not deterred. It should be the council's responsibility to try and safeguard the citizens of this town, not take a political stance that might add to the endangerment of the most vulnerable amongst us. This move would, in my estimation, work against Cedar Woolley in the long run. People who might choose to do business here or frequent our businesses may choose to go to towns where people's safety is put first above unnecessary stances. Many of us are still very cautious about frequenting restaurants and businesses because of the threat of a fast spreading virus. The people who are covered by the mandate, healthcare workers, nursing home workers, school employees and state workers aren't under the auspices of the city council. Going against mandating behavior that could save lives should not be used for political gain. We have laws to protect people's safety. This mandate was put into effect for the same reason when expediency was needed. Passing laws take too much time in a pandemic. I hope you choose to not pass this resolution.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none at six thirty-three, I'm going to close the public comment time and we will move on to unfinished business. The first item that we are looking at is a second read. It's ordinance number two thousand and three twenty-two and amendment to the Cedar Woolly Municipal Code, Chapter two point zero two, and that is the mayor's job, description of the mayor's job. And I believe that is you.
It is. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Council, since we've already presented and discussed this item, really just want to know if you have any further questions or need further information at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bush?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
I shot an email out earlier about the sections T and it was the two point two point zero two zero. And so that was going back to the Cedar Woolly Municipal Code, which I did read through. And I was just wondering, what is the difference in the minor and the major? And I know that might not be related to this packet at all, but it just struck me as like a question. Is there anything that that relates to that in the municipal code on on a contract or whatnot?
Counselor Lavaca, just if I could clarify, are you referencing contracts themselves, a minor contract versus a major contract?
Well, that's what I was asking because the the code itself was saying that he made as follows there on the two thousand and eighteen, for updates and minor modifications by order of the mayor for major substance changes by resolution of the city council. Was that for contracts? It doesn't. It says modifications and changes to the procurement policies and procedures.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm going to see if Nikki Thompson, our city attorney, might be able to jump in here as well. I know she and Doug did a lot of this editing.
So can you point me to exactly the section that we're talking about? I'm in the agenda packet and looking at the looking at the ordinance?
Yeah, sure. It's two point zero two point zero two zero, section C.
Section C. So this references back to the mayor's contract authority. And then you referenced.
Are you waiting for me? I referenced Cedar Woolly Municipal Code, three point seven six point one zero one zero.
And that's where the mayor's contract authority lies. That's where the contract authority lies that the council has delegated to the mayor. So it is tying it back to the municipal code and referencing the mayor's, the mayor's contract authority limits, which are found in that provision.
Yes. So I was wondering, what is the difference in the major and the minor in that? What goes before the council? What stays within the the mayor's realm? And does it, is it? I mean, obviously, none of that's different on that municipal code. It falls right along the lines of that. But is there something that says it's a dollar amount or a time limit or a property? What's the criteria that's the minor major? That's what I could not locate.
That is fair. And let's go into the code real quick here.
I I believe I can help with that as well. I I sent some information over this morning. So that section of the code and Nikki, since you're in there, correct me if I'm wrong, but it references the Cedar Woolley procurement policy. And that particular procurement policy breaks down the various thresholds for different types of contracts and and where the mayor's signing authority falls with those different contracts, depends on the type of contract. And a lot of that's driven by state law. Those are all in the back of that procurement policy. I believe it's page thirty-two. And I'm just going there now. So for example, public works projects, they're authorized by council. If they're over fifty thousand, they're authorized by the city administrator or mayor if they're twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. So that would be one example. Purchasing. So for purchasing, the city council approves anything over twenty-five thousand. And these are certain types of purchases, goods, equipment, materials and supplies that are not a part of a public works project. So the council's over twenty-five thousand. The mayor or city supervisor, in this case, the way it's written, level is fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. And then directors or the city supervisor cover things less than that. And then there are various other categories like non-professional services, professional services. These are all covered in the back of the the manual.
And would there be a reference included to that in the packet or inside the municipal code? I know it's not, we can't do the municipal code, but in the packet, would they have that reference section?
So the I know the municipal code references the section, well, what we proposed references the section. And I need to go back to that now. It was three point. Thank you. And then that, if you go there, that actually references the city's procurement policies and procedures manual, which I just went to. And I recognized this morning that we don't, I didn't find that online when I went looking for it. So I want to make sure we get that up for the public to view as well. And and our apologies for not including that. That was, you had to follow the code to a certain place to find that that part of the code was replaced with this manual.
It's well written and thank you very much for doing all the work to update this. It does go along the lines with the other cities we've seen out there, Mount Vernon, you know, and whatnot. So yeah, great job on going through the effort to write that up. Much, much more than celery. This is pretty, pretty short. So thank you again, Charlie. And thank you very much, Nikki.
Okay, are there any more questions or discussion? If not, we are looking for a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand and three dash twenty-two.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number two zeros or three dash two two.
Thank you. So a second?
No, it's moving on a second.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen to adopt motion ordinance number two thousand and three dash twenty-two. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, sign. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the second read to appoint members to the salary commission. And again, Mr. Bush, this is back to you.
Thank you. And once again, I know this item's been presented previously, so I don't want to take up more airtime on that. But if the council has questions or requires additional information, happy to to do my best. I'm pinching for Debbie on this one, so worst case, we'll get back to you if we need to.
Are there any questions or concerns by the council? Mr. Lavaca? None? Okay. So then I am looking for a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment to the salary commission.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kesty, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And oppose, same sign. Again, the motion carries. We do not have any new business tonight, no new business. So just encourage you, if you haven't already, to look at the information items. There's some, a good report there from both Mr. Freiberger and also from Mr. Coleman. And with that, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Next meeting, of course, is the twenty-third at six P M hybrid, so in person. Unless you feel like you are not comfortable coming to the meeting, then we will see you online. So thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend.
Good day. Good night.
Good night.